Hello, my name is Lynn Tungit. I'm the owner and editor of Newport This Week. I'd like to welcome all of our viewers to the forum tonight and our candidates. You'll be hearing from the five Middletown School Committee candidates who are vying for the two vacant seats for this election term. This forum is a collaboration between the Greater Chamber of Commerce, Newport Chamber of Commerce, the League of Women Voters, Alliance for Liveable Newport, East Bay TV, Newport Buzz, Newport This Week, and WADK. The purpose of the collaboration is to inform Newport County voters. I'd like to point out that the positions held by any one of the collaborators do not represent the viewpoints of the others in the group. It's also important to note that the Alliance for Liveable Newport, the League of Women Voters, and Newport This Week are nonpartisan and do not endorse candidates. The forum can be viewed through the links to the collaborators' websites on social media, on Public Access TV, and for listening on WADK, where the candidates have also been invited to follow up to expand on their views. Tonight's questions have been a combined effort between the collaborators. We encourage viewers to watch for other upcoming forums and to also view past forums and the two that have the 17 Middletown Town Council forums in addition to the other Newport ones. Again, thank you to the candidates for participating. And at this time, I would like to turn the forum over to tonight's moderator Bud Sicilini. Bud is the retired CEO of the Newport County Community Mental Health Center and a board member of the local NAACP chapter. Bud, over to you. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you. And as Lynn mentioned, I want to thank the sponsors for offering this program an opportunity for voters to hear the candidates. It was a terrific idea. I want to say thanks to them for inviting me to moderate. I want to say thank you to Maureen Mooney, who is our timekeeper from the League of Women Voters. She'll be very important to help us, guide us through the program. But lastly, I want to say thank you to the candidates, who I think are running for one of the most important elective offices we have in America. I think being on the school committee is extremely important. So I thank you for your interest and willingness to serve your community. It's great of you to do that. Now, I'd like to introduce our five candidates to our listening audience, viewing audience. In first, I'll do a mathematical order. Vanessa Allerman is here. Thank you, Vanessa. Tammy Holden, thank you, Tammy. Frances Conley Mulde, sorry, Frances, we rehearsed that. Or I did, oh, the, it's running. Bill O'Connell is running, thank you, Bill, and Cynthia Perry. Again, thank you all. Now, for all of you who are watching, just to go through the format, this program will last roughly, you know, 60 minutes, maybe a little less. But it'll consist of four parts. The candidates will start with a 90-second opening statement, and that will be followed, by the way, the order has been drawn at random, so it will just come out that way, as you'll soon learn. There will be five questions that each candidate will be asked to answer. They'll be allowed 60 seconds in response. There will be five, I don't know, really, a few, I should say, yes and no questions, in which case candidates will be asked to signify whether they support it by raising a hand in the first round that I ask. And then if they are opposed to it, to raise a hand, and I'll acknowledge that. Then the last part will be a closing statement of 90 seconds by each candidate in reverse order. And lastly, I want to mention that Maureen Mooney is here, keeping time. And the candidates will see a 15-second notification, as Maureen is showing us now, when that amount of time is left. And then a big, bold, red sign that says it's time to stop. So please obey the rules, and we hope that we have a great discussion and interaction. Okay, so the first question, I'm sorry, I'm setting up with the wrong foot. The first opening statement, we will hear from Cynthia.
Okay, well, hello. Once again, my name is Cindy Perry. I know I was introduced as Cynthia, but I definitely go by Cindy. Only my mom would call me Cynthia, not in a good way. But anyhow, I am so glad to be talking with all of you as well. I have been a member of this wonderful community since 1987, when my late husband and I came up with the Navy from Norfolk, originally from Connecticut. I have thoroughly enjoyed raising my three children through the Middletown School System, and I feel that I can bring a lot to the table because I've been an active member of this community. And I currently teach at Portsmouth High School, and I have for 26 years, after I got off active duty as a Navy Lieutenant Commander. And I think, like I say, I can bring a lot to the table. I believe in transparency. I believe in involvement in the community and being available and making folks aware of all the issues and listening to people that are out there. I find sometimes that that doesn't necessarily occur, and I'd like to make sure that that gets rectified. Once again, I really have enjoyed living in this community. I'm actively engaged. I know a lot about education. I've been teaching high school history for, like I said, for 26 years, and I've had a wonderful career doing so. And once again, I just love Middletown, and I think I can bring a lot to the table. Hope I can count on you. Thank you.
Next, we will hear from Tammy.
Hi, my name is Tammy Holden, and I'm running for a seat on the school committee. I'm originally from Massachusetts, and I've lived on Aquidnic Island for about 30 years, and the last 22 have been in Middletown. I grew up and attended public schools in Massachusetts, and I received my bachelor's degree in economics from the University of Massachusetts. And then later, I got a master's degree in teaching from Eastern Nazarene College in Quincy, Mass. I have multiple certifications in high school and middle school education and special education. I began my teaching career as a substitute teacher in Fall River, Mass, at the middle school and high school level, and I eventually landed at Westport Public Schools, where I was there for about five years. And I taught sixth grade English and math. After a few years, I looked to find a job closer to home, to Middletown. And I was fortunate to get a job at St. Michael's Country Day School right here in Newport, and I taught there in middle school, starting in five, and then later moved to six, and then seven and eight, also English and math, but primarily English in the seventh and eighth grade. And I was there for about 18 years. It was a wonderful experience, both experience in public and private were wonderful. I had worked with amazing professionals. I had great professional development opportunities. I loved to collaborate. I developed curriculum. I was able to develop my own curriculum and fully immerse children into a topic or a theme. And I've been fortunate to work in both settings. I think I have a unique perspective and can offer a lot to the committee. My husband and I have two children, and one is a graduate of Middletown, and the other one is a junior there. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Tammy. Okay, next, we will hear from Francis.
Hi, I'm Frances, and I feel like the newbie. I've only been on Aquidnic Island for eight years. I've had four in Middletown. I am a former military spouse. I'm originally from Iowa, born and raised, and I've lived in a lot of places and moved my kids and said goodbye and said hello to a lot of different people, which gives me a unique perspective on our transient community here in Middletown. I have four children, ranging in age from 10 to 15. I homeschooled for eight years and then transitioned my oldest into Godday at seventh grade, and the other three, the following year, into Forest and Godday. I have loved education for a very, very long time. Homeschooling is a labor of love. I hosted other families in my home and helped them along in their homeschool journey. And I was really excited to be able to transition my kids into public school and have been working as a substitute teacher in Middletown Public Schools. I love it. I feel like my experience, not only coming from other places, seeing a lot of different places and different people across the country, homeschooling, public schooling, and then working in our public schools really gives me a unique perspective. And I'm really excited to be able to hit the ground running and just make Middletown the best that we can possibly be.
Thank you very much, Frances. Next, we will hear from Vanessa. Vanessa, you have to unmute. Vanessa, unmute. You have to unmute. There you go. I think we're having a technical difficulty here. How do we? Maureen, do you have any idea what we should be doing here?
I would say- Bud, would you like me to go?
All right, that would be a very good idea, Bill. Thank you. Vanessa, if you can work on things and see how that works out, we'll come back to you. But thank you, Bill and Maureen.
Okay. I'm Bill O'Connell, and I'm a present member of the school committee, and my famous claim is I'm the oldest member of the school committee. I'm a retired Air Force Reserve officer. I've lived in Middletown over 40 years, and I have a BA and a master's, degrees in chemistry and meteorology and geology. I'm not sure how that all brought me to the school committee eight years ago, but I've loved it since. I've had three girls graduate from Middletown High School and a former employee of Westinghouse when they were pretty big on the island. Oh, and I did teach for 10 years after I retired. I'm retired now, after I retired, in Providence, and probably kind of got my interest in the Middletown School Committee and the function. One of the best things about the school committee in Middletown compared to a lot of the other regions is we are nonpartisan. And I think that's been a great asset. So far, Middletown, I think, has been a kind of on the top. We have two elementary schools, one junior high, and one high school. And I definitely want to add thanks to all the sponsors. And I'm not sure what the red flag means, Maureen, but-
Stop.
Stop. Okay, thank you. I will mute myself.
Thank you very much. Vanessa, how are you doing there? Can you, we still cannot hear her. Frankly, we don't have a- plan. Did you check your audio on the bottom of your screen? Well, we are going to have to proceed. I don't think-
Deb, do you see her sound number?
Yeah, I'll call her.
Oh, all right. I thought maybe this is good.
This is on screen. This is all, this is what life is all about. We're doing the real thing. Oh, leave her a message. That's not great. Debbie, we're in trouble. We need help. Thank you. No, we'll go back to the-
All right, Vanessa, go ahead.
Okay. So my family moved to Middletown six years ago. It's a great place. I love it. I think the schools should reflect that Middletown is one of the best places in Rhode Island. My kids started going to Middletown Public Schools in 2014, and my youngest graduates in 2027. As a parent, I've had the opportunity to experience what's working and what's not working in our school. I'm a lawyer, and I routinely help individuals navigate government systems, including courts, the Social Security Administration, and the Department of Veterans Affairs. I know how to navigate bureaucracy and solve problems. I'm also a community volunteer. I'm a long-term scout volunteer, and I'm active in my church, County United Methodist. And overall, if you want a professional advocate, advocate for better public schools in Middletown, I appreciate your vote.
Eddie, it looks like you're muted.
All right, I beg your pardon. Yeah, I was saying, Vanessa, we are having an echo sound from your audio. And I mean, it's better than not hearing you at all. But just to be aware, I don't know if there's anything that can be done about that. Often, I hear that that results from a phone being on. I don't know, but I don't know if that was the way in which you got in. So please be mindful of that. Okay, we're going to proceed. And I will ask several questions, actually five, that have been submitted by our collaborating organizations. And the first question will go to Tammy. Right, okay. And each of you in turn will have an opportunity to answer this question, but Tammy will go first. What are the two priorities you will focus on as a school committee member? Unmute, Tammy. Okay.
Okay. I think that the first thing that I would do is, I think there's a strained relationship between the town council and the school committee, and I think that they need to work in conjunction in order to make progress. I think that they need to be working together. I need to, I think they need to find some common ground and start to move forward because I don't think we can get anywhere successfully and move forward without the two groups working together. So that's something I would like to focus on, increase communication there, maybe having subcommittees within the two groups, having them work together, but just provide opportunities for the two groups to work together and exist more cohesively, I think would be helpful. Another thing that I thought was very important and why I initially decided to run was when the whole idea of unification was brought up. I don't know if that's the answer, but I definitely think that exploring all options before moving forward and denying anything is helpful. Thanks.
Thank you very much, Tammy. Okay. Next will be Frances.
Hi, so the two things that, in my experience, we need to focus on actually in the schools would be our math. We have a 39% math proficiency, and that's a big problem. And I think that that stems from our very early education. We shouldn't be having fifth and sixth graders using a chart to do simple five times five math. Those are things that they should have memorized by that point, and we aren't pushing that. And so our kids are getting behind in math because math builds on itself. The second thing that I would focus on is our non-English speaking students. We have a 13% Hispanic population in Middletown, and our Spanish-speaking students are being left behind. I have sat in countless classrooms, teaching to a room of students, and there's one kid sitting in the dark for weeks on end.
Okay. Next, we will hear from Vanessa.
Yes, yes. My top two priorities are school performance and equity. Middletown High School is ranked 16th out of 35 in our school report card issued by the Rhode Island Department of Education. We must do better. A higher percentage of students should be meeting their levels of proficiency in math in ELA. And unfortunately, many of the students that are falling behind are, as Frances said, English language learners. It also includes economically disadvantaged students and students with disabilities and underrepresented racial minorities. So we need to put programs in place that will close the equity gap. And I think we need to look at other districts to see what works for them. We need to do some studies. I think we have the political will to do something about it, and now is the right time to actually put our good intentions to work.
Next, we will hear from Bill. Bill, like you, like me, you have to unmute yourself.
Can you hear me now?
Yes, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Look, my first priority from my experience, having already been on the school committee, is budget. That's the most difficult, the difficult thing that you have to work with, with the town council, in budget and funding. And probably a second priority, and probably, I know math skills are important. Obviously, I'm a chemist, geologist, and a meteorologist. But I would try to increase the reading programs, which we've already started, in the K through three class. Definitely, you can spend some time with ESL. I myself am familiar with a few languages and find them important and very helpful. So budget and an increased reading programs, especially for the kids K through three. Thank you.
Thank you, Bill. Next, we will hear from Cindy.
There you go. Um, okay, what I would look at, first of all, is communication overall. And I think a lot of everyone has said the same kind of thing, but that communication between the school committee, the town council, okay? And also, for me, really very, very important is the concept of listening to our professionals in the field, the educators themselves. A lot of time, those folks are overlooked when the layman, I mean, not that, I know that's why we're there, but we need to listen to the people that we hired to do this incredible job. And secondly, I'd like to keep that communication going with the unification process, wherever that may go. But shutting it down is not, to me, is not a good idea. We need to discuss it, and then we, as a community, decide where we go with that. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you very much. That concludes the first question by all members of this group. The second question is, how do you feel you can improve the relationship between the school committee and the town council? Now, some of you have already touched on that, so you may want to amplify, but that is the question. And we'll stop this questioning with Frances.
Oh, boy. That's a big one, Bud. So how do we better the relationship between town council and school committee? I think that the word "communication" is great. I think that there needs to be town council coming to school. I think that town council coming to school and walking the halls and hanging out in the teachers' lounge and sitting with our teachers and having conversations and really seeing what's going on in the building. And then, transversely, the school committee members doing the same thing so that when they sit down to the table to discuss things like budget and all of that, that they both have actual tangible things to discuss. I know that town council is a huge job. You know, there's a lot of things that we need to fund. And school committee, there are so many things to fund and take care of, but in order to best take care of our schools, they both need to have a lens. And I don't think that that exists currently.
Okay. Thank you very much, Frances. Next, we'll hear from Vanessa.
All right, sorry. Okay, what would I do to improve town council and school committee relations? I think that having an election every two years is really good. So we get fresh people every time. I was really gratified when I listened to the Zoom meeting of the town council candidates, that many of them do value public education. So I'm hoping that those town councillors get elected. I'm a very reasonable person, and I can work with people from any background, from diverse political opinion. So I think that is definitely a problem that can be easily overcome as far as the school committee working with town councillors.
All right, thank you very much, Vanessa. Next, we'll hear from Bill. Bill?
Unmuted, all right. In developing, in the relationship between the school committee and the town council is, because school committee is always going to the town council, asking for more funds. If I had to do anything, and the problem is the schools are getting more requirements that they're required to do from the state, which I'm not always thrilled with. So the thing is to make sure the school commit, the town council, okay, is able to understand that a lot of things that we have to do in the school are state-required. All our special ed classes are never reimbursed by the state, and we have to do them. Our ESL are very seldom reimbursed. Our school, state school buses, our school buses, about 1.6 million. And it's hard, this year, I have no idea. Basically, is to try to help the town council members understand that our costs automatically go up from heating to electric. And repair is the most important thing.
Thank you. Bill, thank you. Your time has expired, but thank you very much. Next, we'll hear from Cindy.
What I would be looking at, okay, as the concept, and I've been thinking about this for a while, and a lot of that, I'm bringing that to the table from where I'm coming from, teaching over at Portsmouth High School, is the visibility in the programs, okay? You can't lead unless you're actually there. You really should, I mean, you're not an educator necessarily, but I think you need to see what's going on at that high school, what's going on in the pre-K programs, the elementary school, that kind of thing. Of all members of the school committee and town council, two people going side by side, you go do it together, and then talking about it later. And also, being transparent with one another, with both committees, with the council and the school committee, extremely important. None of this, what's being, you know, what's being hidden behind closed doors or something like that, you need to be transparent. You need to be open. We are all in this together, and I know we've heard that in recent months, but it's so very true at this very local level. So, thank you.
Next, we will hear from Tammy.
As I mentioned earlier, I think the relationship between the two committees, it's very important. I think sometimes people sitting on committees are a little bit far removed from what is actually going on. You know, as an educator, I have sat in on board meetings, and I've been a faculty representative. And I get frustrated because sometimes they have these ideas, but they're not practical, they don't make any sense, or they haven't been in a classroom. So I do think that, as other people have mentioned, the more exposure and awareness to the reality of what's going on in the school is hugely important. I love the idea of spending some time there, spending some time with the two groups more, working on things collaboratively. You know, within the budget, I know there are huge budget constraints, but I do think that people want what's in the best interest of the students. It was obvious to me when I looked at some of the unification responses. A lot of them were yes, and some were maybe, a couple were no. But they all, you know, wanted what's in the best interest of the kids. So I think we just keep putting that in the forefront, and we just continue to work together to make that happen.
Thank you very much, Tammy. We will now go to our third question. And by the way, I should have mentioned that the questions are on the screen, both for the- the candidates and for viewers. The third question, do you feel racism is an issue in Middletown? And if so, how can be addressed? If you don't think this is an issue, then please question with Vanessa.
I think racism is an issue in Middletown. I think that people in Middletown are wonderful people. That's one of the reasons why we chose to move here. I think there are systemic things in place that keeps some populations down. And we can see it in the data. Our, our schools are ranked 16,035, and a large proportion of these populations are the ones who aren't performing. And I did address equity before, but I think it's so important now. I think Middletown residents, I think Middletown voters have the political will to make things better for everyone. And when things are better for everyone, when things are better for people who feel left behind, things are going to be better for all students. And then, when the schools are doing well, our, our town can be doing well. Many of the town councillors valued education, public education, and felt that there was a ripple effect with good public schools and economic development.
Thank you, Vanessa. Next, we'll hear from Bill.
Yes, hold on. There we go.
Now, you just muted yourself, Bill. Okay, you're good now.
Okay, thank you. I do not think that racism is a, is a problem in Middletown. I, I'm not sure how I can even start to understand, Vanessa, but it's not, racism is something that mankind has invented. We don't have problems of black, or Italian, Portuguese, or any else there. I have been around the school system for eight years, and I certainly would have heard it, but now we do, there are two pending lawsuits on this issue, and I find them ridiculous. So I'm sorry, people, it's not an issue that Middletown has to deal with. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Bill. Cindy?
This is kind of a tricky one for me. To be quite honest, which is why I'm here, I don't know. I really don't. My children graduated some years ago, all three of them from Middletown High School. I don't recall it being an issue in, you know, they're in their 30s now, when they graduated, but it doesn't mean that it's not an issue now, and it's something I'd want to explore. I, I don't want to put my head in the sand and say it doesn't happen, and I'm sure it does. I teach in Portsmouth. We've got issues, okay? I think it's endemic throughout society, and it's something that needs to be looked at, but I don't really know. And that's something that I would want to explore fully before I made that decision on where to go and how to act on it, okay? But I would definitely want to act on it if it was, if it was an issue, absolutely. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Cindy. Next, we'll hear from Tammy.
Hi. Yes, I do think it's an issue. I think it's an issue everywhere. I think my eyes have been opened recently with what's going on in the world. I've had to take a hard look at some things and to beliefs that I had, and it's hard. I watched the last council meeting, and they brought up, I think it was called, what was it, equity resolution? Or it was additional, it was adding some additional statements to what is already existing about diversity. I think, absolutely, I think we need to look to get resources. I think that the superintendent was looking to maybe partner with PC to have people come in. My children are Asian. Nothing horrific has happened to them, a lot of stereotyping, a lot of unkind things. So I do, I do believe it's an issue, and I, my eyes have been opened more so recently.
Thank you very much. Next, we'll hear from Frances.
My experience working in all four of our buildings, I work K through 12, is that there is a lot of unity. Middletown is an incredibly diverse population, they're incredibly unified population. I've never seen anybody being picked on because they, the color of their skin. I, I've just have never seen it. I see a lot of kids hanging out and doing things, and they're, you know, all over the rainbow, and, and all over the, the gender rainbow, and so on and so forth. I mean, it's, it's an incredibly diverse school. I mean, I didn't have that type of diversity in the school that I grew up in. I think that the, the data is socioeconomic, and I think that we can do a lot of things to help those kids, because I think those kids are getting less help at home, and that is showing up in the school. So that's, that's where I think the socioeconomic disparage, disparity comes from, excuse me. But that's, that's where I'm at.
Okay. Thank you very much, Frances. Okay, on question four. And the school department finances and budget is a major aspect of the school committee's responsibility. What experience do you have in analyzing finances? And we'll start with Bill on this question. Bill, please unmute. Okay.
Okay, the, I'm gonna read back the question. The school department budget is a major responsibility, and what experience you have in analyzing finances? You are right in asking this question. It's a good question, because I've already mentioned that I thought budget was my, the thing I had to look at the most as, as a school, as a current school committee member. The wear and tear on the buildings, the maintenance of the buildings, and the, the teachers, the, the teachers assistants, the admin costs, and, and then utilities. So I have been looking at bus contracts are a big, we now have Ocean State. Is a major responsibility. I, I think I spend quite a bit more time on, on analyzing or looking at the school budget, and, and wondering and praying on how we're gonna make it, how to make ends meet. Right now, we're
Okay, Bill, I'm afraid your time was up. Next, we're gonna hear from Cindy.
Well, the experience that I have, when I was a naval officer and director at the Navy Family Service Center, I did have my own operating budget and my own staff, my own facility, so I had to manage that. I mean, granted, it was some years ago when I was a lot younger, but I did do that. And also, in nonprofits, where I've worked with my church, where I've been, I'm an assistant treasurer now with my church, and, which is a weekly event, and have chaired the stewardship and the mission board and the Christian Ed Board, where we've had to manage monies, besides my own personal home, obviously, but, um, so analyzing finances, and I'm, I'm pretty astute and relatively bright, so I think that I might, again, bring a lot to the table looking at that. Thank you.
Thank you, Cindy. Next, we're gonna hear from Tammy.
Hi. I don't have a lot of experience dealing with analyzing finances. I have it more on a small scale as an educator, you know, doing department budgets, where to prioritize your money, which devices to purchase as far as technology goes, where to spend that money, whether to purchase them, to lease them, what type of device program we're using, things like that, so on the smaller scale, but I'm looking forward to and be happy to learn. Thanks.
Thank you very much, Tammy. Next, we'll hear from Frances.
As far as analyzing finances goes, well, I have a household, I have four children. I moved all over the country with the Navy and took care of our finances. I went through divorce and was a single mom for a while, taking care of four kids, taking care of finances. So do I have corporate level experience in that? No, but I certainly understand that there are needs that are priorities, and that there are needs that, or wants that are, you know, special, and you have to sacrifice here and, you know, put your priorities in place. So corporately, no, but I have a lot of experience taking care of money and trying to provide for a household on a small budget and in an expensive place. So, thanks.
Thank you very much, Frances. Next, we'll hear from Vanessa.
Hi. I, I had my own law practice for 10 years, and there are a lot of costs to that, but I'm still in business, and I'm still doing what I love. So I am a responsible money manager. I haven't done it on a large scale, but I'm sure I can learn.
All right, thank you. Now, we're gonna go to the last question of the night, and that is this. I'm waiting for it to appear on the screen. Question five, okay. How can English learners, I'm sorry, how can the school department better serve the English language learner students and families? The teachers and staffing represent the town's diversity. So it's like a two-part question, and, and taking time and answering it, but we'll start with Cindy.
There we go. Okay, the first part, for the English language learners to be better served, I think that we need a stronger program, perhaps, with more ESL program coordinators in there, working with our students, and perhaps having student mentors as well, so that there could be a give and take between the two. And as far as the staffing representing the town's diversity, I know most of the, not most, but I know quite a few of the folks that teach it throughout Middletown. My kids went there, and some of their teachers are still there, and some of them are friends of mine and whatnot. And, um, no, the staffing doesn't really reflect the diversity whatsoever, okay? For whatever reason, okay? It just, it just doesn't, okay? I don't think we have, and again, I may be speaking just because of the people I know, but I, I'm 13 or 15% or whatever we have for a diverse population, I don't believe we have that within our educators as well. How we address that, well, then I think we need to look for, personally, the best candidate, regardless of anything else. I think we need our best candidate. So that's what I would be looking for. Thank you.
Thank you, Cindy. Next, we'll hear from Tammy.
No, staffing doesn't usually reflect a diverse population. I mean, I don't think that's anybody's fault. You know, I think that's a goal of those people who hire, is to try to hire, you know, a staff that can represent, but you know, you, you choose the most qualified person. And how do you improve it? It's, I mean, it's programs, it's staffing, it's having coordinators, as was mentioned earlier, you know, peer, peer programs. I know at, at Middletown, we took in a student for two years, for two months, twice, and she came from Guatemala, and she was able to transition into Middletown, and she, she worked with other kids who spoke Spanish, or who didn't speak English at all, and they, she was used really well within the school, and she was also in the Spanish class. I mean, doing things like that, having kids work with kids, and hiring, hiring people and celebrating their diversity, I think is a great way to start. Thanks.
Thank you very much, Tammy. Next, we'll hear from Frances.
Okay, um, I am very passionate about this subject. Like I said, I've sat in classrooms with students who are sitting in the dark. And then, transversely, I was at the high school in Mr. Olivera's class, and I was the only person who didn't speak Spanish. I thought they were gonna tie me up and throw me in the closet, but they were great, and they helped each other, and they helped me. But I think that part of it is staffing. God A did not have a dedicated ESL staff member. Last year was the first year we had a full-time dedicated person. We need technology. We need our kids to, if there's watching a movie in science class, it should be dubbed in Spanish, okay? We should have Google translator going, so these kids aren't sitting, just, they can't hear. We should have their worksheets in Spanish, we should, or, you know, whatever language it is that they need. Do we have diversity in the staff? No, I mean, but I think we have great staff, and I think that they work really hard, and they do the best with the resources that they're given. And I don't think that you can penalize a school district for not having a diverse population of staff. I mean, who applied for the jobs? You know, they're gonna pick the best qualified candidate. And so I think that we can do so much better for this population. Like I said, we have 13%, and it's not all the transient. I mean, we do have, like, you know, this girl is here from, her parents are at the war college, and they speak Arabic, you know? There's that challenge, but the bigger challenge is our Spanish-speaking population.
Thank you very much, Frances. Next, we'll hear from Vanessa.
So I believe this question had to do with how to close the achievement gap with underrepresented populations, and that's not just racial minorities, it's also, of course, English language learners, economically disadvantaged students and students with disabilities. I think that these two, and the data shows that they are falling behind, and we need to look at programs that they're using in more successful districts, higher-ranked districts, is what I mean, and try to implement some of those things, especially the ones that are affordable and don't cost a lot of money. When we were in Maryland, my son was involved in a homework help program, where a high school student who needed, who needed community service would help elementary school students with their homework, and that was a program that cost hardly anything. And I think we should try things like that, things that are working in other places. And also, the Tennesse Hall of Fame has a program for Pell Elementary students, and I'm wondering if anyone in Middletown has asked if that program can be opened up to Middletown students. And I really think the key is, every student needs to feel seen, and every student needs to feel heard, and we need teachers who will provide individual attention to each student and really build relationships. We can do that through technology, through Zoom. I, I think that that's one of the good things that's come out of the pandemic, is our use of technology to reach people, especially the underserved.
Thank you very much, Vanessa. Next, we'll hear from Bill.
Almost there.
Yes, you're there. Bill, you muted yourself.
Oh, there we go. Sorry. Keep flipping, a little too fast. All right. I think Middletown presently has an excellent ESL program. I think we join a little bit with the War College. I am all in favor of languages. I wish we had more than Spanish and French. I'd love to see them teach some Cyrillic languages. Arabic is a little tough for myself, I know about the tiniest of them. I don't think we have a diversity problem in Middletown, because we do get help from the War College or, or in that particular area. So I love having languages. I didn't do well until I was about 40 years old, and I struggled through two years of Latin, which I hated. Now I love it, because it was kind of like looking at the engine. So I do know quite a bit about languages. Greek is by tough, toughest, and Arabic is, is tough. You gotta know what alphabet you're using, whether you're using the English Cyrillic, the Greek, or symbolic, like Chinese, which is now gone depending. Thank you. We do well here in Middletown with the, with the ESL. Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much, Bill, and that completes the round of long questions. Now, we're going to ask you some yes and no questions, and you will indicate which way you lean by raising your hand, and I will recognize or call out your name when you have voted. So the first, you know, round, I'll recognize the yeses, and then the second, I'll recognize no's. So here's the first yes and no question. Do you feel students are getting an equal education with the amount of time spent on Chromebooks? And we'll start with Cindy.
Okay, I want to make sure I get this, so raise my hand, yes, if I agree?
Yes. And if you don't, we'll come back.
I do not agree. I do not agree with that.
I, I, I got that mixed up, and I apologize to all of you. All of you answer that question now. Yes, if you, if you're raising your hand now. Yes, if you believe in raising your hand now. No? Okay, so voting no, no, keep them raised so I can count on you. Okay, I see Vanessa, Cindy and Tammy. Not voting?
But, but are we saying that we feel they're getting an equal education with all the time on Chromebooks or that we?
The question's on the screen, so let me repeat it. Do you feel students are getting an equal education with the amount of time on Chromebooks?
I'm saying no.
All right, so that's an interesting question. Okay, there's no, no.
I'm a no.
No, okay, all right.
I'm a no.
Yeah, okay.
Definitely no.
No, okay, so all of you voted no. They are not getting equal time using Chromebooks as a means of educating. Okay, maybe that question was a little, you know, off. Okay, the next question, everyone vote on this at the same time. Regardless of the impending vote outcome on the new Rogers High School bond, would you support the study of a regionalized high school in the future?
Yes.
All right, raise your hand if it's yes. Okay, I see Frances, Vanessa, Cindy, Tammy. Voting no. Okay, all right, Bill votes no. Okay, the next question, the final one here is, do you feel confident in the state and local COVID testing and subsequent school quarantine guidelines? Yes? No? Bill says yes. No, who votes no? Cindy votes no.
Not sure.
Well, we don't, you can change them. Okay, so Frances, you're voting no. Vanessa? It's a yes or a no? No.
No.
Okay, all right. And Tammy?
I have to go with no.
Oh, we had Frances, Vanessa and Tammy voting no, Bill voting yes. Oh, and Cindy voting no. Okay. Okay, that was a little tricky too. All right. Thank you all. Now I think we go to the final part of this tonight's forum and that is your closing statements. And it's Vanessa went last in the opening. We reversed the order, so we'll start with Vanessa. We're closing statement of 90 seconds.
Okay.
Well, I've been, I've been reminded I skipped something.
Yes or no to COVID testing?
So use this time to, for 60 seconds to explain your yes, no answers if you'd like.
Yes.
Okay, well, we're getting all of our COVID guidelines handed down from the state. So we don't really have a lot of leeway, but if we were, we need to definitely adhere to those standards, the mask wearing and the distance, the keeping distance. So I mean, I agree with that, but I think we also are missing tracing and, and rapid testing. I think those things would really help if we had sooner results and if we could just have a, just a more nimble response, that would be ideal.
Okay, I apologize for omitting that part. Does anyone else want to explain the answer to any of the yes, no questions that you? Yes, Frances?
I just wanted to take a moment to address the Chromebook question that we all seem confused about. Um, I think that our students spend entirely too much time on their computers in school. Um, they spend too much time on their computers and the computers that they have. I know we're getting new ones. The ones that we have been using are incredibly antiquated and we're not even teaching them how to use them. So they're spending all of this time on a Chromebook and they're not being taught how to use it and they're not spending enough time on, on tactile education. We have kids that they can't write very well at all because they spend all of their time on this. And to me, that's a problem. There's a huge connection developmentally in the brain between using your pen, using your pencil and what that, how that stimulates the brain. So yes, we need less, less computer time and more actual hands-on holding of a book using a pencil time.
Okay, all right. Anyone else want to comment on the yes, no? Yes, Cindy?
I just wanted to jump in on that one too, since I'm on Zoom non-stop all day at Portsmouth High School with 100 students, mostly AP students. And on the Chromebooks, I never thought I'd hear a 16-year-old say, I really hate technology. Okay, ever, because they're so wrapped up. It's just a necessary evil at this point in time, but they are getting quite a disservice. We're doing the best we possibly can. Okay, and I think a lot of part of it is to make the kids do better is that we basically, we as educators, Portsmouth High School educators, Middletown educators, we need to be trained better. Okay, I'm 61 years old and I've learned on the fly. I think we knocked it out of the ballpark, but still, we need to be trained well. If we can train the trainer, then we can work better with the kids so that they can be more successful. I think that's a big key, but the Chromebooks, it's not the same. I think everybody throughout the country knows that. Thank you.
All right. Anyone else want to be, yes, go right ahead, Bill?
Right there with Cindy, I, the Chromebook technology is far better than I ever thought it would be, but we need classroom instructions. Remember, Middletown, the phase that we're in goes until October 3rd. I like classroom instruction and I don't know, do I want to sell herd theory? Do I want the kids to be back on October 5th? If I had to vote for it now, I'd say, yeah, put them back into school. Put them back. It's the home learning, not homeschooling, but the home learning on Chromebooks. I've heard from too many people say, not working, not working. Anyways, thank you very much. I'm going to mute myself.
Okay.
My turn. Hi, a couple of things. On the, the question about willingness to have a study to review the unification, just to follow up on that, I think that that is important to follow up on. I think that a lot of people signed a petition. I think a lot of the population is interested in doing that. I think a lot of the folks who are running for the different committees are interested in doing that. So I think that's sort of what the people would like to do. And I think that whether or not that unification is the solution, I think a lot of good could come from doing that and working with experts. The testing was a concern that I had with the reentry back into school. And kind of ironically today, I get a phone call from Middletown High School that my son has a couple of these symptoms. He's got severe allergies, but I had to pick him up. We had to be tested this afternoon. Maybe it'll come back tomorrow, the other one in a few days. So I'm a little bit nervous about that. That was a concern with the testing, so we will see what happens. I was hoping it would be much more rapid by this point when they re-entered the school that we would have them know right away. So we will see. Thanks.
Okay, thank you. All right. I think that concludes the yes and no.
I'm sorry, but, but can I make a comment to Tammy? Very quick.
I am told the rules don't allow that. I'm sorry. Give her a call. Okay, we're going to go to close the statement. Before we go to close the statements though, I just want to say I think collectively us wish the very best of health to your son, Tammy. Okay, closing statements and we will start with Vanessa.
Middletown Public Schools, I, I believe in strong public education and I think when we do have a better performing public school, I think that that's going to have a positive ripple effect throughout the whole town. When we have students who can fill jobs that are offered in, for small businesses in the community and for, for the big employers we have on the island, that's going to benefit everybody. I think the key to that is equity because once we can close the achievement gap for those populations, the school rankings go up and that attracts people to Middletown, young families, people who can really get the economy going. I myself think that public education is a good in and of itself and I'm committed to improving schools in Middletown so that, just as a good in and of itself, just to create better informed, educated people who will vote and who can, who can evaluate the current events and who can participate in the community. But also there are positive ripple effects whenever we have good public schools.
Thank you very much, Vanessa.
Thank you.
Bill, we'll hear from you. Bill, please unmute.
Sorry. All right, there we go. Thank you. I'm very glad, thank you very much for having this forum. First of all, to, to answer to Tammy, there has been many, many studies on regionalization. And, and, and I was on several committees, met at the Newport Library several times. And the conclusion that I learned from talking to Bristol and Warren, merging communities doesn't work, sorry. And we already share a lot of programs. Now, if I had, if we can get around the budget, my emphasis is reading, reading programs, especially in the younger grades K through three, even up to junior higher, most important, concentrating on math. And I'd like bringing in languages would be one of my favorite things, bringing in, if we could afford it, to bring in more languages. I'd like to even introduce German. And because languages make you think, they're very frustrating, beside being frustrating, make you think. Biggest crisis coming up will be contract, teacher's contract coming up within a year or two. The budget right now with the extra, the COVID-19, with the cleaning and everything else is playing havoc with our, with our budget, with our budgets. All right, thank you. I think I've been told I have to mute.
Okay, thank you. Next, we'll hear from Frances.
All right, well, to wrap up, this was very interesting, very informative, very enjoyable. I love this forum. I love that other people are going to be able to watch it. It's great. I think one of the things that, that Bill mentioned in his talk about finance, Rhode Island doesn't have a right to education. And so that creates a finance problem. So every time our schools are told that they have to do something to be in, you know, congruent with the state, well, education isn't a right, so the state doesn't have to put forth any budget for that. So all of that burden falls on the towns and it creates a backlog. So I think that's a big thing that we need to push. I know that's hard to push from the school committee level, but I think a right to education in Rhode Island is important. It definitely affects funding. I think that we need more discipline. We have a, in from what I can see, a big respect issue. I don't think that our students are getting the, the discipline and structure that, that they need. We just sort of move them along to the next class and then they're that teacher's problem for the day. So I think that we need to somehow figure out how to address that. I think electives and CTE programs that we can do a lot better in the electives department and the CTE pathways so that we keep our students and they're not trying to find other pathways in other districts. So I really appreciate the time and I hope that we have an excellent turnout in November.
Thank you very much, Frances. Next, we'll hear from Tammy.
I'd like to thank you for the opportunity. This has been great. A couple of things stick with me in all of my years of education. I was fortunate to visit phenomenal schools. And I visited one in particular that was a charter school and it was just incredible. And I remember sitting down with administrators and I wrote this in a comment for something earlier that I asked them like, how did this school get to be this way? How, how did you work with the population you're working with? How did you do this? And the answer was that they had revolutionary leaders, you know, people who did things differently, people who focused on creativity, people who took, thought every single child in the school needed to learn to play an instrument and they brought a whole musical program into that school. Not saying that's the answer, but I mean, just, you know, thinking that way, thinking out of the box, being a pioneer a little bit, having courses that are of high interest, having courses that can build a passion, increasing the course choice, you know, doing things like that, that get kids engaged, get them motivated, get them invested along with, you know, all of the other courses that they take, providing them with more opportunities. I'm excited, I'm eager at the prospect of working with a group to try to move the school forward. I know the school can be better than it is and I'd love to see that happen for my children and for the children in the future. And I think that collaborating, creativity, innovation are keys to getting there and I would love to be a part of that. Thanks.
Thank you very much. I appreciate that, Tammy. Next or last, we'll hear from Cindy.
Here we go. I'm a firm believer that public education is the backbone of a modern society. Okay, this is who we are, no matter where we are in our lives. The fifth grader, the seventh grader of today is my doctor of tomorrow. Okay, that kind of thing and is the taxpayer of tomorrow. So we need to do our best as the adults of today to provide them with the very best that they, the skills that they need, okay, to be that doctor, that taxpayer or to be the best that they can be and whatever that may be. And to get there, I'm a strong supporter of, of the educators themselves. We need to hear from them. Okay, they're in the trenches, they're the ones that are doing the job. They are the professionals. Just when I go to the doctors, I listen to the professionals in that medical office. We need to listen to our educators and what they have to say and, and pay attention to that. So with that, we need visibility, transparency, communication, professionalism. And I think with all those things and especially listening to our fine staff and faculty that we have in Middletown throughout the program, I think we will have a wonderful, we have a wonderful system. We can only make it better. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay, this wraps up our forum with the Middletown Candidates for School Committee. I want to apologize for my miscues in management occasionally and skipping over things. I hope it wasn't too offensive, but I want to say thanks again to Maureen, Maureen from the League of Women Voters, for helping us through this and certainly all the sponsors. But again, especially to candidates for taking the time out of your lives to dedicate to a very important cause, namely education. There's probably nothing more important that we do but to educate our children. So thank you for that and we want to wish you all the very best. Thank you and good night, everyone.
Night.
Thank you.